This meeting is now called to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Present.
Trustee Brooks.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins.
Present.
Trustee Franklin.
Present.
Trustee Bolden.
Present.
Trustee McMullin.
Present.
Mayor Rudy.
Here. Please stand for the behalf of the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion for a minute. Motion by trustee Williams, second by trustee, uh, something, Bill Jenkins. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Trustee Williams.
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks.
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins.
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin.
Both sides.
Trustee Bolden.
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin.
Both sides.
Mayor Rudy.
Both sides.
There's a comment form that's no response. If it is necessary, the board members may elect to respond. It's gotta give the back to board through the public. It's an opportunity for the public to ask questions and make comments.
All right, thank you, Carl. Robert Travis.
Good evening, Board, Mayor. Robert Travis, six forty-four, Saturday night. I got a couple of questions to ask, uh, as far as the finance, finances of University Park. I was not even coming to the last finance meeting under the weather. Plus, I looked up there on the doors and it wasn't posted. Then I called, little tall, and they didn't send it out, so I didn't show up. And then I understand you had one. What I'd like to also, uh, talk about is during the last four or five finance meetings that we started, uh, we had questions. These questions are gonna be asked by the village manager. And we've always, we like to request that the village manager attends these finance committee meetings, because we have questions for her, for her, she wasn't there. Also, we looked at the budget that was submitted, uh, in December or something like that, and it was not a good budget. We didn't understand your questions that we didn't, you know, that, uh, we couldn't answer. Davis every year tried to ask her, we couldn't do it. Uh, it showed one twenty million dollars in tax anticipation, uh, money that shouldn't have been in on that budget. Uh, so, you know, you need to have her there at every meeting. And also, I'd like to also make a recommendation that, uh, before the budget is submitted for the third reading for approval, that we, that the finance committee and the board trustees have a joint meeting to discuss it, okay? Before it's passed. Also, what I could talk about, to understand, I just read the, uh, the Board Pack, the, uh, the agenda, and said, we are voting on a three million dollar tax anticipation, uh, loan. I don't know why. Uh, I guess we're three million dollars in debt. I don't know where we are in order to shore up the budget, and we never talked about that at the finance meeting neither. Okay, so these are the things we have to know before you move on, because we do, uh, it's the people's finance committee, and it's up to them, you know, and up to them to make sure they understand what's going on before you move on, okay? Thank you very much.
Mr. Travis. Start off.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, um, residents. I just wanna make an announcement that, um, a group of residents will be having our first annual Valentine's Day dance for the youth in our community. Uh, we're gonna have music by Elijah Sound. Uh, it's on Friday, February fourteenth, twenty twenty, uh, from six to eleven here at the Ninety Town Center. And the dress attire is your Valentine's best dress. We're gonna have food and dancing and a best dress contest and a surprise guest. So the young people have to come out to see who that surprise is. Uh, again, this is being done by It Takes a Village. Another announcement I wanna make, uh, just to bring you, uh, up to date on the diversity dinners across the Southland, if you would put April eighteenth on your calendar, uh, and February first, we'll be having the kickoff breakfast for the diversity dinners. So if you're in, and that is free on, uh, Saturday, this Saturday, February first, at eight o'clock at Dining on the Green in Park Forest. That breakfast is free. Uh, if you're interested in attending that breakfast, uh, if you would contact me, uh, my email is guidingstarforyou@gmail.com. I would certainly register you, and, um, we need everybody to participate in the atmosphere that we're in today, to come out and participate in the diversity dinners. And let's say to those who wanna take us backwards, no more. We're not going backwards, we're going forward. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Great question.
What time did you say?
Eight a.m.
What's the diversity dinner? What time?
Oh, yes.
The breakfast is this, uh, Saturday.
Uh-huh.
At eight a.m.
Okay.
Oh, at eight thirty, I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Ernestine.
Okay.
At eight thirty. And that's at Diner on the Green in Park Forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Morgan.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Board, and, uh, wonderful residents. Listen, I wanna thank the mayor and our village manager, Ms. Ernestine, for attending our meeting, uh, residents' meeting this past Saturday.
Thank you.
It was a wonderful meeting. We had a pretty good turnout. Uh, we talked about a lot of things, we, a lot of things that we've talked about before, but here's what we were doing. We, uh, were, um, writing down the, and prioritizing things that need to be done in this village. And what we were gonna do was prioritize those things, and, because we need to have some things done. This village needs to move on. And with prioritizing those things, uh, because the mayor and, uh, Ms. Ernestine couldn't stay, we continued on with the meeting, because we, we were on a mission to, uh, jumpstart this village. Uh, we went ahead on and finished having. And the things that we did come up with that needs to be done, and I mean capital N, it needs to be done, are trees. We have, uh, trees that is dead, have been dead for years. These trees are falling down on people, well, no, I take that back, falling down on their homes. Uh, our children's lives are in danger twice, a minimum of twice, a day, as they walk to school and as they come home, and then if they're out playing, they have big limbs, dead limbs. There's some limbs even entangled in the tree, just waiting for a wind to come and knock it down. That's gotta come down. Also, because a lot of things that we talked about came under code enforcement. Code enforcement could bring in lots of revenue because of all of the different things that need to be done. We have vacant homes here. We need to go after the mortgage companies, the banks, and start bringing in some of that money. Let's stop just sitting around and talking about it, let's do something about it. So with code enforcement, we need a minimum of two additional staff, because here's what happened. Along with the two people we have already, uh, those two extra people can be a great help to our village manager in getting things done, uh, to, uh, bringing in revenue. Uh, also, third thing that we need done, starting April, is to board up these homes, these vacant homes. You have kids, squatters, different people that's up in these homes, animals, uh, things of that nature, all up in these homes, and plus, it's just, it just hurts my eyes to see these things here. So, those are things that we would like to get started by April, and that's all I wanna say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again for everybody participating in, uh, the residents' meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Mayor Trust. Good evening.
I hate to be redundant, but I must say there are a number of things that need to be done in this village. Number one is Regal Farm. Now, I'll be talking about Regal Farm until I'm put down in the earth or whatever, or until you put, you put there. But for one thing, it has got to be done. I live there, and I'm not gonna look at that eyesore. You're not gonna let it impose right in front of me, and it needs to be put to use. And it needs to be put to use for more than just your football team. Now, last fall, the football team, the children, practiced on that field up there. Now, if it's not, if it's safe to practice football, and God knows you can break a leg and do all kinds of things on that if it's not safe, but I know that it's not in the shape that you pretend that it is. But there's nothing wrong with that land up there. It is now time for seedlings to be put in for our garden. So we would like to have a raised garden put in. Now, I know some of you may not know what that is, but you don't need, uh, a big, uh, huge tractor or whatever to come in to do that. We're asking you for one disc, and we know that the land is impacted, and the, uh, Community Block Club is a 501(c)(3). We intend to try to, uh, get some grants to help try to put this in. But we need this done, and it has to be done with equipment, because this is February, March, you need to be planting, starting your seedlings in order to be planted. We have got to raise, uh, this community up as Ms. Mildred said, and the more of us work on this, just like other communities, the more volunteers and the more civic organizations they have, the better they shine and the more things they can get done. Now, I don't need to have you promise me that you have applied for a grant. I know there's plenty of them out here. And our reason for starting a 501(c)(3) is that we can qualify for many things that maybe you cannot qualify for, because our audit's up to date. But what I do need for you to do is just think about your residents and the ones who are trying to help out.
That's right.
We wanna grow tomatoes too. I don't smoke, so I don't need to go buy a pack of cigarettes, and I don't need to go buy booze, and we got a lot of those places down there. I can't hear too well when you get my age, but I do need you to consider that. If you don't want to, uh, ready Regal Farm, if you don't want to do anything about Regal Farm, consider it selling it to me for a dollar. I'll take it off your hands, and you'll make a profit, because it would be, it was given to you free.
That's right. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Trust. Thank you, Ms. Trust. Next, who is? Oh, somebody signed your name down there? All right. Um, Carol. I'm not gonna mess it up. And, uh, Mr. Byker, we're gonna give a few minutes. This is gonna be a brief presentation. This is the guest of trustee Brooks that's in town, so we wanna give her that, that courtesy, please.
The documents that you have in front of you are, they say Amerok on them, we are one in the same company. And I am here today on behalf of Old Dominion Freight Line, who is...
Somebody talk right with the mic, please.
Sitting on one?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yeah, if you want to just hold it, if it's better for everyone to hear you.
Okay. Is this good?
Yes.
Okay. My apologies. Um, I am here on behalf of Old Dominion, and they are located at thirteen twenty-five Central Avenue. We are a security partner with Old Dominion across the entire United States, and they will be moving into the facility on Central later in February. As a security partner with Old Dominion, we are, they have contracted with us to put in a perimeter security fence inside the existing barrier fence. And what this does, it is ten feet tall, it is operated by a twelve-volt battery and solar panels, and it is a security system. It is alarmed and disarmed by way of a control panel, just like you would do at your home if you had a security system there. It has an audible feature to it, and when the fence is compromised in any way, the alarm will go off. And what happens then is the business, the contacts from the business are notified. So it saves police resources in having to respond to false alarms or just an alarm where maybe something has bumped the fence when the alarm has been set, because the business then can see what's going on, and they can, they can deploy their people to go to the site and see what's going on. Now, Old Dominion is armed, if not armed, excuse me, they are operating twenty-four hours a day, so there are people constantly in and out and monitoring everything. But this security system frees up police resources and is virtually invisible from anyone who would be walking by the system or driving by the, by the business, excuse me. Um, what you have, what you have in front of you is a presentation package that is general to our system. So, uh, it gives you a little bit of background on who we are as a partner and a leader in perimeter security detection systems. Gives you a little bit of information about Old Dominion and the site itself, and where we would be located. As I said, we install inside the perimeter fence. We are six to twelve inches inside, and so the chain link itself that is there would need to be compromised in some manner in order for the alarm to be set off for this system. We are approximately two to four feet higher than the perimeter, because we have found in the twenty-plus years that we have done this, that to breach two fences that are two different heights is much more difficult than it is to just get through one, because you can cut a small hole in the chain link fence and you're in, and you can get back out that way as well. We post warning signs every thirty to fifty feet. As I said, the detection is when there is an alarm, the, our monitoring company is notified, the business is then notified, and from there, they'll go to the site. We, as Electric Guard Dog, we install the system, we maintain the system, we, we take care of it entirely, so there's maintenance year-round, um, we're always, we're upgrading, but we're maintaining the system for them, because they use it quite often. We also, uh, install a NOX device, which is for the fire department, first responders, so they can easily access the site to turn the system off, they can get in safe, they can get out. Are there any questions? Thank you, everyone. I'm...
President, I have a... May I have a question?
Yeah, yes, first thing.
Um, in response to that, uh, first responder, is it the company itself, or is it the personnel and, uh, police force responding to the initial breach of, uh, of the fence?
It is the business, that, because we set it up so that our monitoring company will notify the business, certain individuals that are assigned to be responsible for the security. And if they determine that it is a breach that requires a first responder, they will contact the first responder.
All right. Thank you, trustee Brooks.
I wanted to ask you something like this, this fence you're talking about, does it go around the industrial park that we have here?
It is, it is located in the industrial park at this specific business right now. That's where it will be. That's what we are proposing.
That's what I'm asking.
Inside the business's fence.
Okay, so if we, you know, okay, this, does the business pay you?
Yes, they are, they are...
How much are you gonna charge?
They lease the system. Honestly, on this one, I don't know what their rate is, because it is, we have a minimum, but it's based upon the linear footage that is going in.
Okay, so then the business that's out there would be the ones that pay you guys instead of the village?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I wanna, I was gonna wait till any other trustee have a question, then I was gonna wrap it up there.
May I be recognized? I wanna know what type of freight are they moving for us to have to have this type of fence around this, the perimeter of this property? Is it something that we should be concerned about? Because if, if you need electrified fence, that tells me that you're moving extremely important freight. So that's something that I'm concerned about.
We, we do not get into the type of freight that they are hauling everywhere. Any, any freight, any cargo that is moving across the country is, is fragile, is detrimental. It, it could be anything. It, it could be bringing goods to your local grocery store, and it, it all deserves to be protected. Any, any sort of cargo is theft-worthy. So what they're bringing in and out, that's their operation. We're there to protect the business and their employees and their equipment, which is very expensive.
Okay, uh, may I be recognized?
Go ahead, trustee.
Okay, uh, trustees, I just wanna let you know that, uh, this was brought to my attention, uh, August twenty-second, under manager Pate. Uh, this came when Old Dominion, and this is actually the facility that was abandoned on a corner of Manhattan, uh, in Central, actually on Central, it would be Manhattan, right there, Creek Moni, uh, I'm sorry, Creek Moni, in the Moni. So, um, if you've been over there now, that's the renovation that you're seeing. Uh, the technology, when it came to it, uh, they are indeed nationwide with their security. Uh, the reason why this is being brought to the board, it would've went to the committee or the whole, but, uh, I was trying to get it set in where, um, uh, they can meet with the mayor, and so the mayor would know as well. Uh, the mayor has already met with Old Dominion Freightliner, I have not. He has had that discussion, uh, since he's been in, and they have renovated, so, um, yes, indeed, if the problem comes in, trustees, is that the language that we have, anything dealing with electric, uh, electricity with fences, our ordinance is nineteen ninety-five, so it does not suit, uh, any technology of twenty-twenty. So they have, uh, sent a model ordinance for us to read, the mayor has it, I sent it to Madam Village Manager, our lawyers are already looking through it, so, but we did not want, uh, I feel that it's not fair, we all, uh, are making decisions for this village, so I wanted all of us to know what was going on or what I was working on, uh, as your fellow trustee. So, Mayor, you have my time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we'll contact you to have a conference committee, and in order for...
Yes, I, I will, I will, I will contact Donald and after, and we'll have a further discussion, uh, in reference to when it can be on the agenda, move forward, everything we spoke about in the mayor's office.
Okay, okay.
Thank you so much for traveling out here.
Can I ask a question?
Right.
How do we have some mischievous kid that, uh, accidentally touches this fence?
Well, they're not gonna be touching the fence until they get through the barrier fence.
Mr. Dow. Good evening, sir. Happy New Year.
I guess when I said the Santa, I realized I was coming up in spirit, but since I'm up here, I will say, it's welcome, uh, Happy New Year, glad to see you, everyone. I wanna invite each and every, and we discuss, uh, some very important issues that relate to our area, and each and every one of you are invited, so we look forward to, if you can make it, we appreciate it, that'd be this early at twelve o'clock.
At the library.
At the library.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dow.
You're absolutely welcome.
Malika Nicholson. Did you just sign in?
Yes, just signed in.
Okay, thank you. Bernice Alvarez. Now, this is very important, guys.
Thank you for having me tonight. Uh, my name is Bernice Alvarez, and I work at the Spanish Community Center in Joliet. And the reason why I'm all the way over here is because, um, I'm working with the census campaign, which is, uh, called We Count Twenty Twenty, Todos Contamos, and the purpose of this campaign is to raise awareness, uh, to the local community within Will County about the upcoming census, and we want to encourage, uh, residents to self-respond by April first, which is Census Day, and so we're gonna be out in the community, uh, in next month in February, so we're gonna be coordinating with, uh, the Village of University Park and the Police Department, so that the community is aware that we will be out in the community, knocking on doors. We will be wearing, um, these yellow shirts with our logo on it, so that we are visible, and so that our community knows that we will be visiting and answering some common questions that residents may have about the census, in case there are any questions or concerns. We will have trained staff. Uh, that being said, we also are hiring for lead canvassers. We are looking to recruit four residents from University Park and Crete, so within this area. We want to make sure that we hire someone from the community, because they're the ones who know the community best. And we wanna partner with, um, everyone in the, in this area, so that this message comes from trusted voices, which includes everyone here from, um, University Park, from the University Park Complete Count Committee, so I wanna take, I wanna thank, uh, Sharon McGuire also for the invitation, and she is here tonight.
Yes.
Uh, and so they're doing great work already, so I'm just here to support and provide, uh, resources, since we did receive a grant from the Secretary of State specifically for this area. And so we wanna make sure that we provide everyone with the right resources, the training, and a lot of swag also, so we have a lot of T-shirts, stickers, buttons, and all that stuff, so that we can share with everybody else. If there are any community events, I would love to attend and also provide, uh, census information. And so, uh, I look forward to working with everyone here in the community, and if there are any questions, to please let me know. Uh, Sharon is also here, so we're both communicating, and we are, um, helping as much as we can to get the word out and get out the count.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's trustee former trustee McGuire.
Can I just, um, I know I'm not on the, I'm not on the list, can I just? I'll make it really clear. Where's, okay, there it is. Uh, Sharon McGuire, former, um, trustee. Go on the, um, website for your village, University Park website. There is, Niva has been doing a fantastic job on putting all kinds of information about the census. If you go, um, there's a whole thing on census, if you go all the way down, I think, toward the bottom, you'll see, you'll see where you can apply online for regular census jobs. Um, the, uh, we are partnering with, um, Ms. Alvarez. She has a grant, so she's paying for the volunteers, the people here that are gonna be working, but the census, they're still looking for people to actually be census takers. That application is online. If you scroll down, you'll see local census jobs. I believe, Niva, that's what it says. That is the link to the, uh, Spanish Community Center, to their website, where you can apply for the four jobs that, um, she's gonna be looking for, for people to, you know, come for people to, you know, come out. And they're not taking census information. They're just making sure that we are aware of the importance. We are constantly talking about, we don't have enough money. Taxes are this. My road, we're talking about fixing some stuff. I think I haven't seen coal, but that's, well, that's another day. We could lose, listen to me, people. We're, we could lose for people that are not responding between fourteen and eighteen hundred dollars per person. And that, so you go across ten years? Because we take the census every ten years. That's like fourteen, you know, fourteen to eighteen thousand dollars per person that does not respond. That means that money is not coming into our area. You already got people that don't want accounts to begin with. That's another story. We will probably lose two congressional seats here in the state of Illinois. What does that mean? That means we do not have representation in Washington. Again, they don't want us there anyway. So it is imperative that you respond. You can either respond via the internet, via phone call. They have a number that you can call. Or you will get the questionnaire. Between our partners in Joliet and here with the library, we're going to make sure that if you don't have access to a computer and you want to, you know, respond on the internet, we will have people stationed here throughout the village that we will have computers that you will be able to respond. And we can help you with that. Or if you have any questions. We must respond. It is on us. We can vote for people every two to four to six years, depending upon what you're voting for. But this is money that we would not get for ten years. Thank you.
Mayor, can I brag a little bit?
Governor Jay Stroud.
I have my census pen on that I got from trustee Williams, who was on the committee with Mrs. Sharon. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Blue.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Aren't we all happy to be here? All right, I know I'm thrilled. Because I get a chance to speak on one of my passions. And that is registering people to vote. At the library on Mondays, February 3rd and February 10th, I will be doing voter registration from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. I know people do a lot of online things, but there are still some people that want to just talk person to person. And I'm that person. They can talk to a person to person. Also on Wednesdays, on February 5th and February 12th, I will be doing voter registration again from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. If need, I'm more than willing to say until 8:00 o'clock, not a problem. But manager E., do I need your permission to have this put on cable? Because the library okayed it. Okay, I just want to check first. Thank you. I'll pass this on to her. But one thing, and I'm trying to make this real quick. If we all remember back in 1999, a big concern was, oh my God, the world is going to come to an end in 2000. Y2K. All right, everybody here remember all that? All right, I've got something that, when you think about, we got past 2000. We are two decades past 2000. We didn't just start a new year, we started a new decade. And at the first of the year, I always try to send an inspirational to someone. And I need to read this. "In happy moments, praise God. In difficult moments, seek God. In quiet moments, worship God. In painful moments, trust God. In every moment, thank God." I hope this applies to anybody here that needs to hear one of these issues where everything ends in the word God. Thank you so much, because I'm thankful to God.
Thank you, Mrs. Stroud.
What's the last day I can register to vote?
Hurt.
Donna Dealworth.
The last day to register would be February 17th. February 17th. And I've also, on this flyer, I do have a phone number that I can be contacted if somebody wants an appointment with me. I'm making a point of coming out. My car will go anywhere. Everybody sees my car everywhere. Phone number 708-252-3490. I have up until 11:59 p.m. to register you on February 17th. And I am still working at Creek Moni High School, doing voter registration drives, trying to catch those seventeen to eighteen-year-olds. Jaci is one of them that I caught, her son. Caught your daughter. Anybody else, I'm working on them. Okay, I've gotten, what, three or four to your household. But it's, like I said, it's a passion. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Stroud. Thank you very much. Donna Dealworth.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm here because we, I just wanted to go over a couple of things.
Can you, ma'am?
Donna, this is Dealworth.
I just wanted to go over a couple of things that we talked about at the residents meeting on Saturday, which was a good, good meeting, and I think the mayor, the village manager, were attending. One of our priorities that we want, that is very important, is the communication and transparency from the board. But one of the main issues is, when we ask questions at the board meeting, we want responses and answers. So it was acquisition, or it's been asked that during, can something be done where questions that the residents asked at the board meeting be put on the village's website, the answers on the village's website? So all residents can see the answers, because a lot of the residents have the exact same question. And they want the same responses, and they want to hear the same responses. So is that something that can be done where the questions that are asked, just like for instance today, that are asked at the board meetings, be put, the answers be put onto the website the Friday before the next board meeting, by the Friday before the next board meeting? So we will have the answers before we attend the next board meeting. Because it's kind of discouraging when we come up here, or when residents come up, I don't always be here, but I do watch it on TV or online. And residents come up, board meeting after board meeting, and ask questions, but they never get responses. And a lot of the questions that they're asking are the same questions that I want to know the answers to as well. So is there something that can be done where it can be put onto the website to help with that whole transparency, to help with the relationship building with the residents, and also to help with the communication that we are lacking?
Mayor, can I be recognized? Yes, trustee. I really appreciate. Anyway. Turn off, may I check it off? Hello? You've got loud, strong voice.
I really appreciate the candid question that you have. And I do believe that we can afford you the opportunity to see it on the website. And I think our communications director here, Niva Jenkins, placed the answers, the questions and answers on the website, because she does a fine job. So I really appreciate that. And we'll make it happen.
Senator Williams?
Good evening and Happy New Year. As Senator Minister, how y'all doing? I'm doing great. I just want to say first, congratulations to Chief Wilson, on her efforts and the University Park Police on apprehending the young man that took a life out here. And condolences to that young man's family. Condolences to Karen Dingle, who was a resident and on the business out here, did hair in her home. She passed away, so.
Oh, Sullivan?
Yes, yes, sir. It was just this past Friday, they had it at Apostolic Faith Church. So condolences to her family and to the community. I was at the meeting on Saturday, which was an awesome meeting. In fact, me and Millie said, we're going to go on the road, right? Take our show on the road. We're going to do that. Okay. We had a great time. We had our differences, as we always do, but that's okay. I didn't know about the vision meeting until I came to that meeting. So I think we do need to be more vocal with what's going on, because the vision meeting is important. We need to know what the vision is for the community, where we're at, where we're going. And had I not been at that meeting, I would have not known. So we need to put that on the marquee. I want to say to the board, sometimes I feel there is a disconnect. And I would like to see y'all be just a little more vocal, because we're not hearing from you all. We hear from Brooks, which he does a great job, but we need to hear from everybody. And Shirley, I saw you at the meeting, and I blinked my eyes, you was gone. So I don't know what happened, but we should have more participation there. I want to say to Niva, you're doing a great job. And sometimes I feel like I'm at the McVicker Theater, because you know, back in the day, you would see three Kung Fu movies, and the voices don't match the person. That happens sometimes, so I'd like to get that straight. And then I want to say to the new manager, you are doing a great job. I know you wear a lot of hats, dog catcher, Bill Collector, funeral director, all these, baker cook, all that. And now you've added TIF. So with that being said, I do think that we were trying to cut the budget, but I know we've added a salary to that. I didn't agree with that. Think we got to find ways to save money. So I want us to be smart, and like Mr. Travis said, come to the finance meetings, learn about what our wants are, how we can get this budget together, because we're steady borrowing money from Peter to pay Paul. So we need that. And also to list real quick, we're still having that problem where on our association, when the streets aren't clean, and I called RY Property, they said that it was the village's responsibility. Our streets are still like an ice rink over there. It's terrible. My daughter had to catch herself. I called RY, called their emergency line. Whose job is it to clean our streets? He said, if it's two inches, they do it. But if it's less than two inches, Dorell and them do it. But I'm sorry, it needs to get done. We got mud, ice, sand from Aqua working on our street. And then we have the layer of snow and ice on it, and it is terrible. So somebody needs to do something.
Okay, I can add, ma'am, let me recognize.
Yes, trustee Williams recognizing trustee McMullin has something he wants to say.
I'm going to let you know, Public Works is responsible for cleaning our streets all the way down the middle, just like they do every street in this community. That is their job. We come down outside at the two inches when it comes to you shoveling your steps in the sidewalk. That's when we come down to do that. Public Works don't do anything like that. All they do is come down, they're responsible for cleaning our streets.
So is that responsible for the whole parking lot?
No, that's to clean the middle of our streets.
Who's responsible for the parking lots?
Let me finish. When it comes to the spaces that we park in, the association is responsible for that. When they come out and they ask people to move their cars, half of them don't move their cars. Okay, but we were, you know, trying to get something together with that, because we're knocking the door, we ask people to move their cars so that they can go ahead and do their part, but they won't come out.
Nobody's knocking at the door, nobody's ringing the bell. And that ain't just a sound, that's the truth.
Okay, well, when something like that happens, and it's more than two inches, that's when the association pop in or something like that. But other than that, it's Public Works.
I'm speaking at the association meeting, because this is going on forever.
All right, we can take it to the association meeting. They're going to get the same thing, this is what's happening.
Excuse me, Gina. Gina. Ms. Williams. I'm on your block like three times a week. And there's a lot of construction going on right now. Is it, is it, is it done yet, or what?
No. Last winter, we had about four or five water main breaks. And our street was like icicles every day because of the water main break. So Aqua, in an effort to stop those breaks, and this advocate testified, and this came out this around November to start working on our streets. Well, they're digging it up every day, and we see these huge pipelines and stuff. But then at the end of the day, rocks, gravel, mud, sand, and it's terrible. It is awful. I have a handicapped sister, I can't even bring her to my house because of this.
Because I noticed also that the commode was removed, the porta potty. It's gone now, it's gone now. I don't know if they stopped construction over there or what.
They stopped with the cold weather just these last few days, but then they're back out there again, and they parked their Bobcat. But I'm going to call Melissa and them too, because I don't know whose right idea was it for them to start this late in the year. It shouldn't have been done in the spring or in the fall. But it's a hot mess, and we need help. Yeah, they, you know, they're trying to make sure our pipelines and stuff are not bursting like they did last winter, because we had five water main breaks. This is terrible, so. Anybody up here that can help? Can you hear a cry?
They're doing the same thing on White Oak. Same thing. And they said that this is not Aqua, it's the company that comes out to do these pipes. So we understand on them, our streets are messed up the same way, the icing and all of that stuff. They are responsible for getting that dirt up, getting that ice up, so that we can get home safely.
Yeah, and I'm going to ask them to repay the parking lot too, because they.
Oh, yeah, they should do that.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Robin Walker, this is our last public comment.
Thank you all. Thank you all. For those that don't know me, my name is Robin Walker. And I am here basically to represent the kids of the village. So I have committed to rebuilding the baseball in this community. In the past, there were funds misappropriated, stolen, along with equipment. So I pretty much am, have started a whole new baseball organization from scratch. And work alongside a lot with trustee Tutus and trustee Sonia with a lot of the different sports activities and those things. And I'm also the PTO president. So I have committed to starting this baseball organization, but we are starting from scratch. We have nothing. We got everything up and running, but we do need funds. So that's what I'm here today to ask for, from the board or anybody in the audience, if they were able to contribute or donate anything to this organization that we're trying to get up and running ASAP. We were going to take time to try to fundraise at that, but we're behind. A lot of the surrounding communities have already started registration last weekend. So we wanted to try to do this expeditiously. So I'm here to ask basically for any funds, if anybody could donate anything or contribute in any kind of way, that would be great.
Mayor, may I be recognized? Well, I got two questions, but I do want to say, one. If I'm not mistaken, we already put that in the budget, if I'm not mistaken, football and baseball, it's been, the last time someone had came up here, I want to say was trustee Franklin when he was, before he was sworn in. And I think six thousand dollars is supposed to go to baseball. And I think six thousand is supposed to go to football, because those are our two major youth, out, non, or non-village-related organizations. So I could say that if the village manager, when she has a chance, that that can be discussed. But I didn't know, well, that, that next question. Equipment and money misappropriated, was the police notified? Because that irks me.
Yes, it was. They have been notified. I've tried twice, two years in a row. They have been notified, two years in a row. We're unsuccessful with getting that back, because unfortunately, they can't do anything at this time, because it's. because it's, um, it'll, small claims pretty much. I would have to go, we'd have to take them to court and it'd have to be done through the president. And I've been the secretary for the last past five years. So, uh, we decided to just drop everything last year, um.
So they made it more civil than credible?
Yes, it's a civil, yes, it's, yeah, yes.
Even though it's money being taken from little kids?
Yes, correct, two times in a row, two years in a row. So, um.
Chief, didn't you, did your detective, well, I know the detective division been swamped. Uh, were you aware of this?
No, I'm not familiar with, um, I'm not aware of whatever specifics you're talking about, but I'd be happy to, to look into it for you. I don't know if it's something that's civil.
If you can, yeah, if it's civil chief, and I know how the ASA can be when it comes to approving stuff like that. But if they're missing two years in a row, the ASA, A, uh, ASA should give approval for something or at least a misdemeanor, you know. So just if you can, just take a look and see what is it that state is not, uh, okaying for our detectives to approve charges. Thank you ma'am.
And then also for, uh, your first question, I did already have a meeting with, uh, village manager Ernestine and there, and funds are not available at this time for.
For baseball. And, and they are correct and we're, we're having, in fact, we have something on the agenda tonight. Um, uh, we'll, we'll probably address it. But when is it that you need this money?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible? Okay, we'll, we'll try to work around it because we are, uh, our buckle is a little tight right now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Robin, I just want to thank you for, uh, taking leadership on the baseball program because one thing that we don't need is, uh, no activities for our children to do during those summer months. So the baseball program is an extremely important program in our community. And the timing of it is, makes it even more important. Uh, trustee Brooks, you're correct. In the past, there has been a, a six thousand dollar reimbursement for equipment for the, um, for the programs. And if you remember it, Chief Payton's last, um, uh, passing of the budget, I spoke on a check that was gonna be cut for baseball and I stopped that check because of what she's saying, what was going on. So that check was not reimbursed to the baseball program, uh, this past year as it has in previous years because the check was not going to a legit 501(c)(3) and therefore it should not be distributed to any person. So, um, I believe that we're gonna, we're gonna find a way to make sure that our kids have baseball. Uh, whether we have to make, make a donation, a small donation as trustees, right? To get things going, uh, because it's not gonna be able to come out the budget at this time. But I think that we can, as a community, come together to help save the baseball program that's been going on since the seventies or eighties at least. Thank you.
I have a donation, I'd like to give a donation, uh, towards, uh, the, uh, football, the, uh, baseball.
Okay, thank you.
And, and residents, that shows a need for our community. We have to make our decision in the future. Whether we want to reinstate a park and recreation department or do we want to go to public referendum and go for a park district? There's a need there, it's crying out. We need programs and services for our youth, and for everybody, and we need a facility. So thank you Mrs. Walker for everything that you're doing, stepping up. And I'm quite sure we'll get some help for you.
Okay, thank you.
New business? The first, second, and third reading ordered to amend it, part two, title four, chapter two ten, section two ten dash zero one, standing rules, setting meeting dates for the regular readings of the board of trustees and committee of the whole of the village of University Park, Will and Cook Counties. Is there a motion? Most, most by trustee Williams? Second by trustee McMullin?
Question.
Question, that's trustee.
Yeah, mayor, um, I know it's first, second, and third reading and this is the first meeting that we're back. Uh, I just have a concern because, uh, uh, I don't, I can, if, if we did do this, I know we had modified some things in the past and then, um, for our standing rules. But, uh, most of the residents know that our meetings are on the second and fourth Tuesday. Uh, I mean, I, I, I don't, at least I didn't go get a consensus of how they would feel if we switch it to the first and the third Tuesdays of the month, considering that everyone is so used to showing up on a, a second and fourth in our village. And I'm not sure if, if this was, was a reason why I was on the first, the second and fourth.
It's a reasonable reason because of the economic plans for the future and we need to have certain attorneys there for those things.
Well, well, at least I would, you know, well, at least on me, I, I.
It wouldn't start to march if I'm not mistaken.
Right, it's, yeah, it doesn't start to march. I, I just would, well, um, I'm gonna yield my time, but I, I just feel that it's some type of, well, at least I didn't, I didn't get a chance to get a consensus on it. Uh, because I, you know, to see how, how my constituents would feel if I, if we moved it. And that's just for my hope, but, you know, uh, I yield my time.
Okay, roll call, Matt Cluck.
Conflict.
Is it trustee Williams? Trustee Brooks?
Pass.
Trustee Jenkins?
Pass.
Trustee Franklin?
Votes yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Pass.
Trustee McMullin?
Yes.
Mayor Rudehead?
Votes aye.
Who do you vote no?
Huh? There's no conflict with the library.
There's conflicts with library and school board. I know I wasn't supposed to talk, sorry, I'm out of order. But I had to let y'all know that.
Um, abstain.
Votes no.
Can I make a comment, a question, or can I speak?
Go ahead trustee.
So I'm hearing that it's a conflict with the school board meeting. Are, are the board members aware of that? Can somebody clarify that for me?
Yeah, because trustee, the reason why I'm so hesitant on this vote is that it, it's, it's new, but I also know that the mayor is, uh, because I was in the attorney general's meeting with the mayor and the village manager and I, you know, it just so happened, dialogue about what's coming to the vi- village. I do understand that, you know, when he mentioned as far as attorneys and having certain attorneys here. But I did not know it was a conflict in reference to the residents, you know. And so the reason why I abstained was only because I didn't get a chance to see how they feel. And because if I'm a resident like this, you know, the red that I see, they're, you know, they've been coming on the second and fourth, you know, and, and here we, we may cha- we may change a little bit, something up in their life of the second and fourth. So that's why, you know, I just feel, that's why I abstained because I, I thought this would be in the, the committee of the whole first that have input from the residents first before we make the change. But yes, I do know about, uh, you know, things that we need to get done. So, I mean, I'm hearing a lot of answers and so this is kind of like on the spot vote because I didn't get much feedback. Understood?
I got a question.
No more questions right now?
I have a question. The question is, I've been here thirty years.
Miss Millie, please stop.
The meetings I've been on, two, the second, fourth Tuesday. We're changing our lives because the attorneys that we pay for is asking us because they want to come here on a particular date and time. There's something wrong with you.
Let me, let me explain something to the audience. Unfortunately, this is an op, well, I'm not gonna say unfortunately. Fortunately, this is an opportunity. There's certain attorneys that are available to us on those days and it's a reason why we're getting those attorneys to be here. And it has a lot to do with the future growth of University Park. So that's the reason why we're asking for a change. Everything just can't be told out publicly like, like we would like to. But sometimes you have to trust the process. And I know people are accustomed to the second and fourth Tuesday, but that's all a part of evolution, of change, is doing some things differently. It's gonna benefit you guys in the long run. And for the things that are coming, it's important that we have the right people here who thoroughly understand the process and what's going on. So that is the reason that I was asking for the first and third meeting.
So this is for future meetings?
Yes, starting in March.
That we need certain term out here to proceed with what we're planning on, some of the things you're planning on.
Yes, of course, yes, yes, that's, that's the fact.
Well, can we try, can we, can we try, uh, table it until meeting of the whole? Yeah, mayor, I, I, I want to make a motion to table this item to, to.
Oh, okay, just a second. So we have a motion from trustee Brooks to to table to the committee of the whole meeting. Is there a second? Second by trustee Bowden and trustee Jenkins. Roll call?
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both sides.
Both sides to table.
Both sides to table.
Both sides to table.
I concur. And to the committee of the whole. Yes, we have to expedite some things, guys. Item F two B, resolution approving and authorizing execution of engagement letters by and between the village of University Park and W I E E F L I L L P for fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty eighteen and fiscal year ending April thirtieth, twenty nineteen. Is there a motion?
So move.
Move by trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Second by trustee Williams? Questions? Roll call?
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden?
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin?
Both sides.
Mayor Rudehead?
Both sides. Item F C two, resolution approving and authorizing a three million interfund loan from the special tax allocation fund of Tiff District Five to the village, to the corporate fund secured by twenty nineteen tax debt of the village of University Park, Cook, and Will Counties. Is there a motion?
So move.
Move by trustee Brooks?
Second.
Second by trustee Williams?
Comment?
Questions?
Yeah, mayor, um, I, I just kind of want, uh, I'm just want to say to the village manager, um, we're a little behind on this. This was part of the three, this would be year three. I want my colleagues to know this too. This was supposed to be year three that we were supposed to be stepping out of debt. Um, last year we took a cushion of two point three and that was manager Payton. He just grabbed six hundred thousand, uh, out the tip to cushion us on, uh, what we're doing as a village. Uh, somehow we done fell backwards. This is seven hundred thousand plus from last year. I just want to say this before I vote yes because I know that the people, this village has to survive. And I know we can do this. From now until May, really April thirtieth, till this money come, I just ask that anything we do, because I see things on bills payable, that if you spend at home, you know fifty dollars can add up to a thousand if you spend it several times over and over again. So I want us to please, 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 this is trustee Brooks, because remember, I was told I'd be wrong. But I'm right. We were broke. And we were sitting in the bank, good enough to play these employees this week. And that was it. But now it's over. Because our vote will save this village. But we have to come out of what we've been in. We just experienced the worst economic crisis this village has ever had. In the blueprint we followed, I see one trustee in the back, he don't say much to me, but he was part of the blueprint. One point five million for three years was supposed to get us out of trouble. This was supposed to be the last borrow from the tip. But we have went over. So I want the residents to know, you hear three million, you hear three million tonight, but it's three million credit. It's three million credit. So we should be getting a memo every single time major purchases come out like manager Payton did. We should receive it. So that there's transparency that every single trustee up here on this board, before I vote yes, I want to see the same thing that we've been seeing for two years. So if I know, if I get an email saying that we spent a quarter million dollars on this or a quarter million dollars on that, or quarter million, or we had to pay payroll, I'm fine with it. But you best believe I'm gonna scrutinize every bills payable from now until April because we messed up. Some, I didn't mess up, but somebody messed up. Somebody messed up. So mayor, I yield my time, I just ask, and the mayor, I ask that you exercise your power. We have did it before. Uh, I've seen it where village manager, former village manager wanted to spend ten thousand dollars to go on a trip, knowing he was gonna be gone by the time.
Yes.
You remember?
Yes.
So mayor, I ask, who else is signature? Well, I, Mr. Ellis is great about it, he's not gonna, if, and I know I'm a signature. If they don't have a legit reason, or mayor, if you have to put a freeze, like we put a freeze on our travel, I hate to sound bad. Put a freeze on it if we have to, we have our necessary needs. And I'm not trying to break the show, but I'm saying that we depend on this, this is, this was scary. This was scary. And I was a little aggravated because I talked to the mayor and he was listening to me. I just want to say that we, this is the last of it. And maybe one more year. Maybe one more year we have to borrow because the revenue that's coming in, that you seen on that budget, it's not, it's not coming to twenty twenty-one. If it comes. And when it comes, don't forget, they not just paying, University Park is the taxing body. They got the school, the library, and everybody else. So we can't count our eggs before they hatch. Mayor, I yield my time and I thank, thank you for listening to me uh, because I know we had a serious discussion for the sake of saving this village.
Roll call, Matt Cluck.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Absolutely yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee Bowden?
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin?
Both sides.
Mayor Rudehead?
Both sides. Thank you both. Item F two D, resolution authorizing and approving
Can I ask a question?
Of grant application pertaining to the Illinois Department of Natural Resources Park and Recreation Facility Construction Grant Program. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Move by trustee Brooks, second by Williams and Bowden at the same time? Questions? Roll call?
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins?
Votes yes, yes, yes.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides, votes yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Votes yes.
Trustee McMullin?
Both sides.
Mayor Rudehead?
Both sides. Thank you very much. Resolution's passes. It's a work in progress. Item F two E, motion to approve the correction of a scrupled error in resolution number R twenty nineteen dash thirty-five, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement by and between the village of University Park and Trim Electric by correcting the company name from Trim Electric to Tim Electric. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Move by trustee Brooks, second by trustee Elizabeth Williams? Questions? Roll call?
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Vote, vote aye.
Vote, both sides.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee Boden?
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin?
Both sides.
Mayor LuDeh.
Both sides. All right, let me find these bills payable. Attached to your corporate is a listing of general operating expenses for the village of University Park that occurred on December 20th, 2019 through January 28th, 2020. General fund, 378,702 and 65. Road and grids, 629 and 80. Town center fund, 24,876 and 35. Capital project fund, 48,499 and 23. MFT Motor Fuel Tax Fund, 20,829 to four, five and six, a thousand bucks. Payroll fund, 5,644 and 53 with a grand total of 482,182 and 46. Is there a motion? Move by trustee McMullin, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Boden and Brooks again at the same time. Questions?
Question.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Here we go.
Check number 107, oh, excuse me, 104,746. $500 payment for internship. I thought an intern. Well, most interns I knew worked for free, but $500, how did that come about?
Mayor, um, may I have a question?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, Madam.
Well, interns, each university has their own, um, definition of intern. Governor State's interns, um, are given an amount that's agreed upon by the institution and the intern. In our case, the agreed amount was $1,000 and, and that was done by John Payton. So, uh, the expense was incurred. Uh, we had to honor the agreement of Governor State. So he got the first 500 and he has 500 left, so, but he was an excellent intern. So he's developing our land bank, so he was, he was an excellent intern. She asked about the money. But someone else obligated it to contract and we had to fulfill it.
Okay, and, and I agree. He's been here, um, but I didn't know that the former village manager, once again, money going out because it's not their money and now they not here. Okay, um, if I can go down, I got this answer at Village Hall. Uh, if trustees wanted to know, because if you seen this, I was questioning 104,757 and 104,7, excuse me, 104,758 and both of them were AT&amp;T and then one said AT&amp;T Mobile. One was 53369 and then one was 4,023 and it said, uh, phone service. And actually, the reason why I highlighted it was because if one says telephone service, but if the trustees look just further down at 104,772, I seen Comcast. Uh, actually Comcast has three and they both said a telephone service. So, um, that's from my understanding, finance department made that, uh, that was a slight glitch in there. Um, if we can go to page two. Yes, meaning that they, they should have put wireless telephone service for both because it don't make sense for us to have an AT&amp;T landline and then a Comcast landline. That's dumb. I'm sorry. It needs to be corrected. So, but it's going to the same, uh, it looks like it's going to the same place. Yes, it is. Okay, if we go to page two, we go all the way down again.
A glitch?
No, 104,835, last four being I asked about iPads. Who else need an iPad? Or is that, is that the service itself that former manager Pay set up? That's the service, something else he done set up. He probably talking about me in Florida. If right. Okay. Oh, 104,775, now this, again. Um, 17,000 for lawn service. Yeah, and this, and if I'm not mistaken, he explained, well, people were thrown under the bus. I don't think Madam Village Manager know about this. But with this lawn service, this village also purchased, oh, by the way, Madam Village Manager, 17,000 is for two days of cutting in University Park. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And I don't know if it's true, but allegedly, he says that they purchased equipment to cut the grass. We don't need to do that. We got Darrell Byers, our director, and your DPW. So Board, I, I may be pulling this check off if they want to discuss it at a civil court or something. But 17,000 is our whole budget for the whole year, not two days of cutting. So, yeah, so I hear somebody, so.
You absolutely right, but what we're caught with is obligations in the prior administration. But when we sign off on those contracts, it obligates the village regardless of which administration. Now, very easily, they can come back and, and they can get their money. They can lean, they can go in the court, they can do all the attorney note. But they can get their money through that process. But it has happened. It was approved. It was, it was, it was approved, trustee. It was approved and it was signed off and we obligated a contract. So I don't know this man, but I know that when something comes in, the documents are there. Because if we were subpoenaed to provide them with this information, it is what it is. Now, I don't know how they got there. He's absolutely right. I don't know, but I'm going from this point on. It's an outstanding bill that has been outstanding continually, continually. But what's happening, it is hurting our credibility with vendors. When we don't pay accordingly, they say we, trustee, I know, I know what you're gonna say, but
Did you?
I know what you're gonna say.
We already, that's already, that we, we already not shot credibility. We can't even get credit cards anymore until, you know, well, well, let me say this, I, I'll yield. Yes, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead, then I'm gonna let acknowledge trustee McMullin.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna yield, Mayor, uh, but I just want to say this. We just, these people understood, but we just had to transfer 3 million dollars to save, to make sure we make payroll until April. If they want to talk about it after April, then maybe I have a. But I want to know what is it that they did for 17,700 dollars for two days of work? Because I didn't okay it and did you okay it, trustee? I, I didn't okay it. I just, I just feel we in a financial crisis. See, and that's even worse. Yeah.
No, trustee, trustee McMullin.
Yeah.
We've gone, we've gone over this several, several times and we've gone over it and we did not approve it at all. So it shouldn't be there. So the, the past manager Pay did not approve it and we did not approve it. So we, we haggled about this for a long time and wasn't gonna pay him. Let him take us to court on this one here because 17,000 dollars is too much for two days.
Yes.
And our total budget is 21,000 dollars for the whole summer, but for two days, no way.
No way.
No way. This is from the very beginning. Go ahead, Madam Turk.
The reason why this is on the bill is they are, they are taking litigation out on us and suing us with this amount of money. This is why it's on the bill.
They have no, we didn't okay this payment. I don't care if they're gonna try it, but let them try it. But we didn't okay it. We didn't okay it as a board.
We're not going to litigation.
Well, we have to. We're not gonna pay them 7,000 dollars in two days.
So, so it's the, let me get a good understanding. There was only two days of work performed.
Yes.
And they're, and they're filing a suit against us now.
Yes.
They have for past the bills.
Notified.
We've been notified.
Yes.
Really? So that was just for two days and not for the summer?
No, it's not for the summer. It's only two days. We decided that we weren't gonna pay that two days. Somebody should have instituted a stop order at that point.
You know what, trustee Brooks, uh, Madam, I would, I would recommend that someone from the, uh, attorney's office take a look at it and we'll take it for right now and then look at what our options are moving forward.
I agree.
I got video. That makes sense. You got video of it.
Got the video.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, um, Board, I yield my time on what's, on the rest of the questioning. However, I would like to, um, we'll wait for a second, uh, a little noise in there.
Ms. Mellon.
Okay.
All right, trustee Brooks.
All right, Board, I would like to, um, table item 104,775 to complete quality landscapes, uh, under the check description of lawn care for 17,700, um, dollars until our attorneys, uh, take a look at it. If I get a second.
Okay, second, Madam. Motion by trustee Brooks to, uh, remove that from the bills payable. Uh, second by trustee Jenkins. Roll call, then I just is the voting to remove the item from the bills payable. So everybody's following up. Roll call, Madam Turk.
Okay, trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Both sides.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides, we move.
Trustee Boden?
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin?
For the last, absolutely, for the last time, both sides, okay? Can we move?
Can we move again?
I concur. Okay. There's a motion on the table for bills payable now. Roll call, Madam Turk.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Mayor, may I be recognized? I'm looking at check 104,830
Yes.
For 3,629 dollars. I wanted to know, is this, uh, a carryover from month to month or is this one month of Sam's Club?
What do we have to show?
What? And it supplies 3,629 dollars. Is this for one month or is?
No, it's a carryover and it also services every department in the village.
Oh, yes. Can we have an invoice for the last 30 minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Get it? Roll call.
Trustee Williams?
Both sides.
Trustee Brooks?
Pass.
Trustee Jenkins?
Both sides.
Trustee Franklin?
Both sides.
Trustee Boden?
Both sides.
Trustee McMullin?
Both sides.
Mayor LuDeh.
Both sides to pay the bills.
I vote both sides to pay the bills.
All right, thank you. All right. Now it's time to quote the board of trustees, uh, officials, committees and commissioners. Well, I'll start off with, with Board. This is something that everyone probably wants to know about. It's our conversations regarding Aqua Water, the hours, the quantity, the quantity of water you can pick up and everything else that's involved in Aqua, compliance testing and everything. So this is what's going on with the water, everyone. We're all up here dissatisfied with the hours of delivery to pick up water from 11:00 to 4:00 on Mondays, 11:00 to 4:00 on Wednesdays and 11:00 to 4:00 on Friday. That just does not fit the need for our community. So trustee Brooks and I and a couple other trustees, we sit in and we come, we talk to the attorney general. So the process is when there's something that's implemented by Aqua, instead of us contacting our Aqua, we contact the attorney general's offices and the Will County State's Attorney, which is our, which are our enforcement agencies. So we tell them that those hours are not satisfactory for our residents because there's not an opportunity to pick up water prior to you going to work at 11 o'clock. And there's definitely not an opportunity at 4 o'clock for people to work out. The majority of our people work in this community, work outside of this community and don't have the opportunity to get there at 4 o'clock. So we, we, once Aqua sets their, draw their line, we talk to the attorney general's office, we give them what we want to see, our hours, then they go back to Aqua. Aqua comes back with their response. So to make a long story short, this takes about three to four weeks. So this is what we got on the table now and we'll get answers. Is it on Thursday? If this, if this is what's gonna be in effect. So on Monday, we're, they're gonna maintain the hours from 11 o'clock to 4 o'clock. On Wednesdays, we're asking they're opening at 1 o'clock to 8 o'clock PM. There will be no opening on, on Friday, but they will open on Saturdays from 10 o'clock AM to 3 o'clock PM. Another, so we're gonna get our answers back this Thursday and we'll let everyone know. Secondly, one case of water does not do it for anyone. So we're asking that we also are able to get at the minimum two, but as much steam necessary for each household because every household has different demands. Also, um, so we're gonna see what that goes, how that goes. Also, there's a, there's a big tank that sits outside there for people who want to fill up their five gallon Henley and Sneak uh, dispensers or whatsoever. There was a problem with that because they take the bottled water inside to it doesn't freeze, but they let that container sit outside so it freezes, so they don't have any compassion or concern about the people who would like to fill their containers up that way. So we're asking for that to be done. So we're also complaining about the back billing on our sewage bills and water charges. What Mr. Blanchett and Aqua has emphasized is that they're prorating this year's bills on last year's usage and how they're coming up with sewage charges. And that's a bunch of nonsense and nobody on this board agrees with this. So that's the other matter that we're fighting. So sometimes families shrink. A lot of times kids go off the college, so the water usage is not there anymore as much as it used to be. So what I think is completely unfair, we're working with the attorney general. And trustee Brooks, the Thursday?
Uh, yes, sir.
Thursday, we'll get a response back prayerfully that they will make our request better as far as the hours and operation and delivery of, of water. Also for delivery of water, we're asking that if you know of anybody that's still on the advisory list, to get the person's names to the village hall or to the mayor's office because we're insisting that Aqua has delivery to those residents at the same time every, during their daily week. If it's Monday, they're gonna drop it off, Wednesday, Saturday whatsoever, that there'll be consistently a certain amount of cases of water delivered to those residents during that timeframe. The good news out of this scenario is that the process is working and it's about 75% there according to the regulatory agencies. The bad thing about it is I feel that Aqua is using predatory terms on us because naturally when our water heal, right? But they tell us to run the water, run it through multiple outlets, run that water, run that water because it helps coat the pipe, keep coating pipes. But the bad thing about it is it has to go out through the sewage system. So they find a way to predatory on fixing the clean process, which we all want to be able to use our water without restrictions, without letting it run for two minutes, without fuel filters all through the doggone house. So in my opinion, Aqua is using predatory terms and saying, well, the EPA says that run the water. So they come up with a way to come back and charge us for the sewage charges. Completely unacceptable. We've had talks with the, um, who's at the ICC. They're quite aware of it. So we're using everything that we possibly can to use the enforcement against Aqua. So this Thursday, we'll have our talk and prayerfully that they will give us the opportunity. So starting February 1st, that the hours will be changed, the amount of water being picked up will change, the delivery of our residents will be changed. One other key thing is compliance sampling. They talk about compliance. They talk about compliance sampling. Compliance sampling has to be done from the kitchen faucet. And it's unfortunate because I know no one that wakes up in the morning, comes out their bedroom and runs down to the kitchen to wash their face and brush their teeth. But unfortunately, according to the EPA, that is where they can get the compliance sampling from, and that's where they have to get it from. They will test other faucets inside your home if you ask and request to it to ensure that your faucets upstairs or somewhere else are still, are good. So, we don't, we can't do anything about the testing, uh, compliances. But they will test other faucets, other water outlets in your home if you want to, so you can have the peace of mind knowing that at least my bathroom faucet is clean. So that's the process going on with Aqua. Prayerfully, this is over very, very soon. I would say spring, but it's hard to put a determination on it 'cause as I tell them, people, what the problem fix? But hell, you don't wanna run your doggone water to help you get the problem fixed, then they tapping us for additional money. So that's the catch-22 that we're in. Trustee? Yes, sir.
I, I really appreciate the effort that's put in by you and a fellow trustees, uh, holding Aqua Water to the fire with, with all of the things that they're trying to do to us. They did it to us. We didn't do it to them. They put something in the system that eroded the, the pipes, the, you know, the, uh, the, the solder, right? They did it to us.
Let, let, let me tell you what they did, Trustee. This is, this is what happened, 'cause this is a serious issue. And the bad thing about, well, not the bad thing about it, Aqua owns the water lines, the sewage systems, the transfer stations and everything else. So they really have us in the catch-22. We definitely need them for our economic development. But this is where their negligence came in. According to protocol, when there's a new source of water being brought in, there's supposed to be a section of pipe cut off, taken to the laboratory and seeing how the chemical effects in the laboratory before it's implemented into the entire system. That process did not happen. They did not give us the courtesy or the respect, but they did computer-generated testing with the Village of University Park, and that's where the problem came in. And so, that's the fact, that's why the Attorney General is suing on behalf of the village and the Will County State's Attorney because of their negligence on doing, following the right protocol. So, that, that's what it is. That, that's what the process is.
We're going through the process right now. Anything that has to do with Aqua Water, we have to go through those sources. We cannot talk to them. Uh, Mr. Blanchett?
Well, you know what? It's, it's a very touchy situation because there's a, a, a major lawsuit going on. And you just kinda gotta tiptoe around it and just kinda, we just kinda work together so we can speak in one common voice.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. But our demand, what, what we talked to at the Attorney General's office, they will enforce the things that we need. They even agreed that it's unheard of to say that you only can have one case of water and if you don't get an opportunity to go every day doing it, that you can't even pick it all up at one time. So it's unacceptable, and we're gonna stand on that. And we're gonna continue to fight them so this problem is over. And the Attorney General wants to know, what would be our ideal outcome? Ideal, ideal outcome would be to condemn the water rights and give us the opportunity to bring in clean, fresh, lake-missioned water in the ideal scenario. That's what I wish for. So, that's where we are right now. Let's stick together. I appreciate all of your residents hanging in there, fighting the calls because this is one big family here in University Park. And this is something that should bring us together and unify us for the common good of all. Because nowadays, water is known as the new oil. Now we realize truly how valuable water is in our daily life. Thank you. Any other reports from officers?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes, sir, Trustee.
All right. Um, here's my report. Uh, this is what I've been doing since December sixteenth. Uh, many of y'all already seen, um, with the, uh, the presentation that, uh, just occurred with Old Dominion. Uh, Old Dominion will be opening up on the fourteenth of February. So, uh, that is beautiful to have another business moving in University Park. The mayor, indeed, uh, we spoke with the Attorney General's office, uh, at least three times. This would be the fourth. Uh, this came when, um, when I'd seen the mayor about a month ago and I said, "Mayor, you know, I know we're already working on it, but I'm becoming very impatient as well as a lot of residents because, uh, this has died out the media." And I think that's what Aqua Water wanted and Mr. Craig Blanchett wanted himself because he did, he made sure that the last interview on television was him, not us. So, uh, uh, in saying that, the mayor did, uh, uh, mention the delivery days. Uh, oh, just one, Mayor, I think, uh, when we had the, uh, uh, the hours that the Attorney General had for delivery or for us to have access to water, excuse me, it's eighteen hours in their order. So, right, so what I did was is that I, I requested that extra hour, uh, to twelve. So we wanna try to get it from twelve to eight. Uh, one example, we didn't try to do it, but we expressed that we have a trustee that works and get off the Metro train until seven. Yeah, we didn't mean to, Curtis, but that's a prime example. He, he, he is you. He works every day like the rest of you and come down, come from downtown. And they should be available for us. Also, um, I made a point that I'm forty-seven years old. I may look normal to you, but I have metal in my back. My back is fused. I cannot, and I told him, and the mayor kinda snickered, I said, "Thank God, Karen was able to jump into my arms and I was able to take over the threshold" because I can't lift, I can't lift certain amount of weight and the water is heavy. So, my question, my point to the A.G. office was that we have people that come up there, they're seniors, and they can't lift. And it's not Aqua's job, Aqua Water's job to assume that every person is a healthy body, whoever they are, to come get their water. And I agree, and, and with the mayor, we emphasized that at least if someone come on a Monday, then they should receive three to four cases of water so that they can at least don't have to return until Saturday, if that. So, uh, another point was that as far as those who have disability, and I told him that the problem that I have is that it's people like me as well as many seniors who the opportunity to get water, that should be Aqua Water's job to keep track and deliver with all those nice, healthy bodies that they had. Now what changed? And I, and actually the mayor, he agreed. What changed from the time that they had to stop delivering water to our door to the fact that right now they can't deliver to someone who cannot make it up there to that facility? Or better yet, they make it to the facility, but the question is, they put four cases in your, in your car, who's gonna carry it into the house? So, that's the demand that they definitely would, uh, that they said they would take and bring to, uh, the people. So, as far as the water, we were stretching it though with the A.G. office in reference to getting money back. So, uh, we, we tried, we, we tried. And, and, and indeed, they made, they made it very clear, oh, this is the one important point that bothered me. Aqua Water feels that we get cases of water to only sell it.
Say again?
I didn't, I didn't stutter. We get, people get cases of water to sell it. So, my point to relate back to them was, we a community. And there are people here, if I have a case, two, two, three cases of water and Trustee Liz Williams need a case, I'm gonna take the case over to her house and because it's at her house, so you see me as an Aqua Water employee, get out of my car with a case of water and take it to Liz, don't mean that Trustee Liz Williams bought the doggone water. And I told them to make sure that they relay that message back to Aqua Water and tell Craig that Trustee Brooks said it, the one that he will not come back here to have that conversation with. So, to, to wrap that up, the mayor was correct. And actually, Mayor, I know you summed it up in a few minutes, but we actually, each call was the minimum of two hours with the man, village manager and myself. It was the minimum of two hours. I think the quickest was last week. So it's been a lot of talks on trying to make sure everything go right with you all. Um, I haven't done this in a while, uh, but I used to love when Trustee Milton Payton used to say, "Facts." I attended the finance meeting, uh, and someone said there was an elephant in the room. So I immediately thought that the elephant was in the room is that we didn't have any money. So I'm like, okay, someone knows that we need to put some money in our general funds. And the statement was is that we need to get rid of the fire department. I thought that that was an absurd statement. I just wanna give you some facts. Now, the one fact that I said that night, that in two thousand eight, about two thousand eight, the fire department budget was about one point two million. And I'm gonna tell you why I said one point two million. Because that golf course in two thousand eight spit out one point six million. So, in saying that, the very same men who take care of you, they have the tightest budget that you can see in this vill, in this village. They average fourteen calls a day. On average, they get a call every four hours. And the statement was made that there hasn't even been a house fire for them to attend. Well, we just had three. And paramedics. So, ladies and gentlemen, in saying that, I wanna say our fire department is the best in the area. And based upon today's laws and I did take in consideration of what was said is that we cannot eliminate our fire department because, one, part-time and on-call fire departments are not working anymore. And since then, you, and tonight, we just paid for your engine that comes to your house, two payments. Okay, so, they are up to par on vehicles, equipment, it could be more updated, as well as staff. So, in saying that, the golf course should be the place that we make sure that when it comes to dollars, that it's bringing in revenue. Now, what we did was that the golf course was to maintain a certain amount of money in their account. Whatever's not in there, you, the taxpayers, us, the board, we would put in there to keep them afloat. Now, I tried to allow other trustees to take part into it so I don't never step over into another trustee's lane. But what I would say is that that was a deal that was best suited for us. Now, then paying out an extra million point two a year of your tax dollars to that golf course. And note, when we spent those money, those dollars, that money was managed by University Park staff. We all know that they were top-heavy over there. We had a director for golf and a director for, uh, uh, the restaurant, a director just to watch the front door. So, we did, we, we've done the best that we can right now. And I think that we have come a long way. Then also a resident made a comment, he asked me about when we get a new police chief. I didn't know anything about that. So let me comment about the police department. Acting, uh, Acting Chief Wilson, uh, I think I made year twenty-three last week. Wilson, you should be on your twentieth already, right? Am I not? She was right behind me. Acting Chief Wilson, everyone in this room know who she is.
That's right.
Here's some history for you, again, facts. Trustee Payton was saying, facts. When I go to Laraway meeting on Thursday, that's your dispatchers, that woman, notice I say that, black woman is your first black chief, woman chief in Will County. She's the only face in that room. So, when she got that spot, let me just be honest and give you history. Some facts. Manager Payton was the chief. But there was an ordinance that was passed that I, I totally disagree. It was to make him the Public Safety Director. He had every opportunity as the Public Safety Director, it is an administrative position, which means he does not have to, he doesn't act in that capacity as the chief. So get that misinformation out there. He held a title to carry the gun, to sit in that seat that, that Ms. Ernestine have right now. He did not run the day-to-day operation of this village. She did with the title of Deputy Chief. What should have happened, and it was emphasized. And here's a fact. It was Trustee Payton that said she should be the chief and she should receive every single thing so that she does not fail. So that when someone says something went wrong, well, who fault is it? It was ours. Does she have squad cars? No. The newest car she got is maybe a sixteen, if that's working today. Does she have bodies to patrol the street? No. Just recently, she were probably down to five officers 'cause people are retiring now. So, we cannot set, set someone up for failure. And I didn't know anything about no new police chief coming. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm gonna give my endorsement to her because she are on her retirement year. She's retiring.
A new chief police coming.
Excuse me?
Is that what you said?
That's what I was told. I didn't know nothing about it. So, I told a resident, I didn't know nothing about it. I'll mention it in the board meeting. But she has done her job. We all know her. She all tries, she tries to help us. Some of us, you know, she, she, if, if it's all avoidable, she try to make it work that none of us have problems in this village. But if someone come in and mess with us in this village, she gonna take care of that issue. Uh, last but not least, residents are saying, I, I have a little disappointment. At least four longtime residents are moving. If, they're, they're fleeing University Park and it worries me. One is the, the water. Two is progress. Three is our financial crisis that we have been in. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, all I can say is, is that we have to be patient. If anything, I know that I did not vote for the last budget, but I understood what was trying to come in. But it was not gonna come in April of twenty twenty. It's coming in April twenty twenty-one. So we cannot spend the way we've been spending and not think that everything is gonna be okay, 'cause if not, we're gonna have to bar from the tip. Before I finish, two things were given to me. Okay, I'll read this off. This is for Debbie Wilson, care of University Park Police Care, Trustee Brooks, with my address on it. The compliments far exceed the complaints. Just would like to take time to express appreciation for all you do to keep our village safe. Your efforts have been expressed beyond our village. Thank you, you Pete residents. If someone can pass this to Debbie Wilson, this is yours, chief. The next one is that I was, uh, I think we heard it earlier. Aniva, if you can just zoom in, Karen Johnson Mark passed away, so this is her, um, obituary. So, everyone, uh, we are trying to do better as far as communication in this town. Uh, when one leaves, it's a great loss to us all. It's a great loss to us all. We seen what happened with Kobe Bryant and his daughter. And ladies and gentlemen, my wife kept saying, and I, I keep trying to put a mental block on it without tearing up, but I seen so much as a Harvey police officer. There's nothing, nothing, he said it. You know how Harvey was, and in getting back, he had nineteen homicides. So, and when I was there... So, and when I was there, 19, that was unheard of, we did our job. But I want everyone to know that a daughter and his, and her father on the same day. And I try to block out of a traffic accident, same situation. Thank God I gotta go to the streets, may I give my time? God bless you all.
All right, my, my report is short and simple right now. First of all, I'd like to congratulate, uh, police chief, I'm saying police chief because, uh, she, um, along with her staff, was able to, uh, apprehend the person who did their job over at Mike's. And, uh, she apprehended that, well, they, they apprehended that person. So, uh, she saw it through from the beginning to the end, and I appreciate you for that. And our community is safer for that, okay? And also, Mrs. Dingle is someone that I've known since I've basically been in University Park. And, uh, she get all my kids care, always, always in the hair. Plus, Mrs. Dingle's daughter played basketball with my, yeah, with Keesha, yeah. She played point guard and my daughter played, uh, forward center. But, uh, they were friends and that, that's when I knew Mrs. Dingle, Karen Dingle. And, uh, she, and I went to her wedding that she had recently, couple of years ago, and it was very, very nice. And, um, my condolences goes out to her family for, uh, their great loss. And, uh, our community, thank you, uh, Mr. Brooks for bringing that up. Our community is losing a business partner to someone who, who raised a family in University Park and was a part of University Park and still was a business owner in University Park. My hats off to Mrs. Dingle. Karen.
Trustees, anybody else?
Yeah.
Trustee.
I wanna invite everyone out to come and support the University Park Warriors basketball team in their home opener on Saturday. At 1 o'clock, it's gonna be at Cremoni Middle School. Uh, also wanna share some light on some positivity that took place since the last time our meeting convened. Every year, uh, me and my beautiful wife Bridgette, we put together humanitarian projects uh, with the, with the, uh, programs that we work with. This year, we decided that we would, um, raise money and put together a toy drive to bless 125 families in the village of University Park, uh, which was a huge success. I would like to say a special thanks to the coaches that came out to help to wrap the presents. A special thanks to Bernard Alsberry III and, uh, Bridgette, as we all, the three of us went out, we actually hand-delivered 125 gifts on Christmas Eve to, uh, children in the village of University Park. Uh, finally, I would like to make a statement as I begin to get grounded as a newly elected official in the Southland and begin to learn more about the challenges that our village face and other villages in the Southland face. And what I've learned is that many of the challenges are very similar, um, in regards to the increased amounts of homicides. I know trustee Brooks spoke on Harvey Illinois experiencing, uh, 19 homicides in 2019. And if you're not familiar with Harvey, it's only 6.2 square miles. So that's, that speaks testimonies to the state of emergency that we are in, in the Southland. But one of the biggest, um, commonalities that I've, that I've noticed in my research and meeting with other elected officials in the Southland is the mental, the mental illness and the mental health epidemic, epidemic that we're facing. And I believe it's important that as elected officials, we begin to have these dialogues because in a village the size of University Park, we can have an impact on, on mental health if we're strategic about it. I believe it's extremely important that we recognize that that is an issue, considering that we've already had our first homicide, hopefully the last homicide in our community. And just understanding that the ability to walk up and shoot someone in point-blank rays, there's a mental, there's a mental health, it's, it's a mental health issue that's involved with that. And the last thing I'm gonna leave you with is that if the state of Illinois had the same enthusiasm that they had about opening up cannabis dispensaries in black and brown neighborhoods as they did as opening up mental health clinics in black and brown neighborhoods, we've been in a much better place. Those are my comments, God bless.
Um, hi, hello, this, this getting late, I'm gonna make it brief. I'm, I've been sitting here for the last nine months doing a lot of research on what's been really with the village stands. Some of it has been rough and eye-opening, I'll say that. We've looked at a lot of ups and some downs as we went along. And I think that as, as, as a board and trustees, we have to roll our sleeves up and start implementing programs that are gonna start our police department and take care of our youth. I had an opportunity to sit with our engineers, Ms., uh, the Ontario group in reference to getting ready to put together a cop plan. And also they, they helped us create and work out a grant for our park, which is Regal Farm. It's a large grant. We don't know if we're gonna get it, we're praying that we get it. But until we get it, we need to look at Regal Farm and start to create a sense of community by putting, rolling up our sleeves and getting involved. If we have to go out and get our baseball field together or paint our porch or do things that are gonna make us fit, make Regal Farm begin the process of coming back. We, we know that seedlings, it's time for, like Ms. Trust said, March 1st for seedlings. We know we don't, we have a food desert here in University Park. And one of the, the programs that I wanted to implement is to bring in, uh, uh, community garden, which our children could get involved with gardening and have a farmers market on the weekend. And these are things that we can do as a community that quickly doesn't cost us anything. So I just wanted to tell you a few things that I'm getting involved with. And as our police chief deals with her everyday nonsense with the different, the differing, um, residential, um, communities, I'll say not residential communities, but apartment complexes of 100 and more units, I feel that they should have their own 24-hour armed security so that'll take some of the heat off of our police and work, you know, and give them the opportunity to patrol our community because, because it's just not fair for them to put, have to constantly go to these different areas on the same things when they should have their own security. So these are a few things that I am thinking about and looking at and talking with our mayor and our village manager in reference to. And thank you, and thank you guys who made it to 2020. The best possible news I can tell you is that when I was elected, 30 days after my election, my mother was diagnosed with cancer. And it has been a rough, rough eight months. If you all don't know, I'm her only child. So it's been a rough eight months because that's my group divide. But on, on 2019, we got the information that my mother is cancer-free. So it has been a good experience. And I hope you guys, you're being patient with me, not being as vocal. Now is, I'm ready, now I'm ready, ready, ready. So Regal Farm, here I come. And I'm gonna come to everybody's door and knock, knock, knock because we need some help. Thank you guys.
Okay, any, uh, reports from Public Works Police Department, everybody good? Anything they need to know? Parking, snow removal, snowstorms, parking, tickets, city stickers, anything? We good? All right. Just remember everybody, you're not fully dressed until you put your smile on. Let's keep that attitude, let's work together to move this community forward. Is everyone, oh, matter of fact, we have an executive session.
Mayor make a motion to go into executive session for, uh, litigation, employment, compensation, discipline, all just in case.
So is there a motion? Motion? I need a second. Second by trustee Bowden, roll call.
Both side.
Both side.
Both side.
Both side. Both side. All right.